Yeah, we don't have a gavel anymore. Okay, it's 6:02, we're gonna get started. I'll do the do a call to order, they'll do a roll call. I don't know if anybody's on the Zoom, that's a member of the zoning board or not, I don't see any. Let it be known, there was five of us, so we're in good shape as far as a forum goes, so we'll proceed. And I'll read the preamble first. The zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code of ordinances to the facts of each case. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning, nor can it change zoning. Matters brought before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance, or the sign ordinance and development and environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on those same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County within 30 days after the decision is rendered. So this evening's docket is a little abbreviated, we have a little bit of minutes, first of all, from last, last time, they may have a chance to review the minutes, was there any any edits from last month?
I'll make a motion.
I second.
All right, all was in favor? Five minutes from the February meeting are approved. There are no organizational procedural items that I'm aware of, so we'll proceed to the unfinished business, which is ZBA 21-07, Michael Streger, agent for the homeowners at 5147 Pine Branch Point, Domete, Georgia, 30338 seeks a variance from Chapter 16, Section 16-78, to remove trees and construct a modular block retaining wall in the 75-foot stream buffer. The tax parcel number for this site is 1836501219. Staff, would you refresh our memory on this case a little bit and bring us up to the latest?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would like to take just one second to introduce our newest staff member, Madeline Smith, who started with us two weeks ago, I think. She's a senior planner, and you'll be seeing a lot more of her in the following months. So please all say hello.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome, Alan.
Thank you. So let me get the presentation slides set up. And this case was briefly before you, at the last hearing, applicant asked for deferral at the time to create a robust mitigation plan for the ask, it is a stream buffer variance. And you can see on this slide, the stream is not on the subject property, but it's on the neighboring property. There's a significant drop on the property in the rear yard where it goes down to the stream and parts of the 75-foot stream buffer are sort of in the rear of, of the property. And what they're trying to do is to create a a flat area to have sort of a lawn flat area for the families to recreate and, and just be out there to make it a more useful space. To do it, they are proposing a retaining wall in the 75-foot stream buffer, approximately 15 feet into the stream buffer, 10 feet into the stream buffer, and it will require some grading and tree removal in the stream buffer as well. The case was before us, and it's easiest to see when sort of juxtaposed next to one another, the case was before us at the end of last year as well, which you can see on the right-hand side as part of this administrative permit. It was a similar proposal, a similar project for a flat area, but it just didn't go into the 75-foot stream before creating a smaller space. The way we understand this, the applicant laid it out and they sort of sawed and it just felt that they felt it didn't quite meet their needs, and if they go for a project like this, that they need to have more space, henceforth the variance ask. And this is, you'll find that this is part of your package, and this is sort of a large part of the reasoning we use to recommend denial for the case because it was before us as a similar project, and sort of there was a demonstration that it could be done with less of an ask. These pictures show some of the sort of the steep drop-off on the site that limits the usability of the rear yard that you can see here. There's a fair amount of mature trees, and then you see sort of vines as part of ground cover and partially sort of on the trees as well, but you see the steep drop-off down to the stream on here. The applicant did send us a sort of mitigation plan, and that's a planting plan that would supplement sort of the existing mature trees on the site with additional larger trees, but also with a fair amount of understory trees and shrubs and sort of create more of a natural habitat there. This is typically, this is a good example of what we like to see for the stream buffer sort of mitigations, like we had this looked at by our landscape architect as well, and it's all native plans, it's a variety of different heights for this from small type of ground cover plans to shrubs to understory trees that should help with overall mitigating the impact and reducing runoff down into the stream eventually and to stabilize the slope. Yeah, overall, we continue to recommend denial, though. As we've laid out in the staff report, that's part of your package, and should you instead wish to approve the requested variance ask, we've prepared these three conditions, and we would ask you to take notice of those and, and use those as well. Right, thank you.
So would the applicant or representative like to address the board? Just please state your name and address, please.
Michael Streger, our office address 1800 Lake Park Drive, Smyrna, Georgia. So we appreciate staff looking at this, and we've kind of worked through maybe a better plan and better approach. We do certainly understand we never really want to be in these buffers, we understand what the purpose of these buffers are, to protect that corridor. Also, at the same time, we, this is a single-family residence with family, and they want to use it, so what's the magic in balancing this all out? So yes, there was a plan, we had great intentions of not getting in the buffer and accomplishing, you know, some usable space in the backyard, and we submitted, we submitted permit, we were going to move forward with that. The reality is, is we laid it out, so we had that part of this process started. We laid it out with the client, and it just wasn't going to work. You know, substantial amount of money that, you know, not that that matters to, to develop anything in this backyard, the steep slope, and as we looked at it, just wasn't a good value, it wasn't going to accomplish, you know, I'm not a big sports person, but their family is, and the reality of having a space that's going to rain from 20 to maybe 25 feet, you know, on the original plan, it's kind of tight, if we think about a parking spot, it's 18 to 20 foot long. So even if it was two parking spots wide, when you actually, you know, I'm not a sports guy, but when real people do sports, they, they need a little more room than that, so then we said, you know, we looked at the conditions there and said, this is, this is sort of an eroding slope the way it is, just, you know, if we don't touch it, it's, it's not like perfect, I hate to say it, it's, there's sedimentation that's going down to the stream, there's trees that are old growth that are, that are dying and falling. You know, even in backyards that we design that, that are, you know, we're allowed to develop, we, we thin out the older trees, it's a natural progression, we bring in new hardwood, we bring in understory, we bring in evergreens, the birds love that, the evergreens to get in the branches. So, so we went through this, and so to kind of shorten this up a little bit, the idea is we laid out what was the usable area that seemed to make sense and be as sensitive as possible in that area for great, the way graded out, so it's a weird shape of the wall and the angle, but that was intentional because of the way the grades fall and where some of the trees that we did try to save, so that was an intentional move of what you see now. Obviously, we presented last time, and that didn't go so well, so we kind of looked at the core reason, the resistance is that, again, we're in the stream buffer. And the spirit of stream buffer is to protect the corridor from sedimentation, you know, kind of, kind of help and aid natural, you know, you know, animals and, 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 you know, plants and all that stuff, so that's what we did, that's what this is, this is not an ornamental plan, this is a renaturalization plan with a native, with a native palette, and we really think, all said and done, when this plan goes in, we can do that initial marriage, the marriage of usable space on a single family, protect the corridor, improve the corridor, and it's a, it's a win-win, so that was really the approach. It's not like we're trying to run grass all the way to the, to the back fence line, we really, we're pushing about 10 to 15 feet based on where that is, and again, if we looked at, if we did this and we looked at the sedimentation in that stream, because I do large commercial jobs, we have to put devices in the creek to see what sedimentation is prior to development, and we have to make sure as we're developing and moving dirt that we don't add sedimentation. I would bet if we looked at the sedimentation that's happening now, that the sedimentation would be better, less sedimentation when we finish this plan. So that's the basis of why we think this is a good marriage of use of this property and still not setting a bad precedence. And that's, I understand that a lot of this is about setting precedents, is that's if we get approved, someone else can just walk in here and say, well, you allowed it here. And we don't, we don't want to do that, we don't want to set a bad precedent, we actually think this is a good precedence, and we do think this is a good approach on marrying use and the big picture of what we're trying to accomplish for the environment.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak in favor of the applicant? No hands raised online? Okay, sure, yeah, absolutely, we have 10 minutes, but we got, we have plenty, I think, left.
First of all, thanks, Paul, it's been great to work with you, thank you for your time, I appreciate you all listening to us. I went down there and walked the yard when it was laid out.
For the record, just your name.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, thank you.
I'm James McGee, and I live at 5147 Pine Branch Point, I'm the, oh my. Sorry, I was just trying to keep under 10 minutes. So as Paul said earlier, and Mike said as well, you know, we walked it off, and it's just, you can see from that first picture how far the the buffer goes up into our yard, and it really gets up pretty close to the house, and to spend that amount of money and not get sort of functional use, you know, that what we're kind of going from is a long sort of bowling alley look to a little narrower, closer in from the neighbors and a little bit deeper, it just makes it functionally better. My front yard slopes down too, so we can't create a flat space in the front yard, this is literally the only place we can play, create it, and, you know, that, that's just hard as a homeowner to look at that and go, this is what I can make for tens of thousands of dollars, like, geez, like, you know, I may not do it, so. But I'm an environmental guy, like, I don't want to cut down trees if I can avoid it, but I think in the paperwork you may have seen, you know, we got in the past four months, two big trees have fallen down, the stuff's eroding, sorry. And just trying to make it better, so I do think honestly that it will be better than it is now on the whole, but, you know, I also understand sort of the standards that you're trying to look within, and I also think to the point about precedent, my last thought. You know, we'll only, we'll agree to the mitigation, and I think that's where it's, it helps with precedent to say, like, we don't really nearly grant variances, but if you're willing to do this and make it better than it was before, that's okay from a precedent standpoint, that's my opinion, but that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. No one else looks like in favor? Any opposition to this variance, either online or in person? Doesn't look like it. No hands raised?
I see no hands raised on.
Great, thanks. All right, we'll close it now for board questions and discussion.
Yes, I'll start. So I'll cut to the chase, and this one, I mean, is, well, it's, it's Mr. Schreger, right, Schreger? Am I saying it right? Okay, okay, so the the part, unfortunately for you guys, you've proven that something could be done, might be not be the ideal thing, but something could be done, right? So right now, you've got to try to convince at least me as that the variance, that you should be getting a variance because of something that's different that nobody else has, that you're treated, that you have a unique situation, and I'm getting that there's a slope, okay, that's fine, but sell me a little bit more, try at least tell me how you're going to improve this, so I mean, what, what else, I mean, I, I, I see the plan, but how is this going to be a better place than it is now?
And, and to that question, can you talk about the square footage change, because it's hard to read on there, because by the time we get it, it's too small.
Sure, sure, totally understand. The easier one, and we do have another plan with dimensions, but where you can see that 75-foot line and the, the wall is anywhere to the left, it might be like 10 feet out from that line, and at the very fattest part, it's about 15 foot, so if we look at the length of that, I'm going to do some quick math. That space, you know, probably 80 to 100 foot long. So going back to my earlier point, the space, and at the widest point of this design I've shown, it's about 48 feet long. So if we back out, just say that 15 or 18 feet in there, we start getting into about maybe 40 foot wide, and I know that sounds big, I know that sounds big, but if, and if I would love to bring everyone outside, when you really look in a context that a parking spot is either 18 to 20 foot long, roughly, it's, it's just two parking spots nose to nose, and the idea of actively playing sports, I mean, or using it kind of gets limited, and so that, that's kind of where we're at, is that it's, and then that's, I'm talking about the widest spot, so suddenly you go from what I just described, two parking spots, nose to nose, to skinnier, to one parking spot, and so and I know it's grass, and I know you can go out there and engage, but if we're going to go through this effort, because yeah, if we can, if we just did the other plan get approved, you're still going to have below this wall, below this 75 foot, is not like this pristine condition. That's, that's the reality is, is outside of what we're trying to accomplish, this is not this pristine, totally vegetated, you know, perfect situation, it's a thin, I mean, the pictures are deceiving, when you're walking through it, you realize the ivy is not thick, you look and you see old growth trees in decay.
Okay, okay, so, so, yeah, keep going on the, okay, so you said that there's a couple trees that are decaying, I mean, so and, and I'm thinking in your perfect scenario, if I was kind of helping you out, that, you know what? If I take out these five trees, that's, I'm in the nature, I'm making the backyard better, I'm doing, I'm, I'm making the, and then when I, the planet better, and I'm going to put some more trees, and by the way, that, that retaining wall I'm going to put, you know, it.
That's kind of the, to help kind of understand what those trees are. So to that point, that we have, for birds, we have the evergreen trees, you can see there's a good amount of evergreen trees in there, and I did it in my yard, and it worked. The birds go in there, and they like, they like to be in there, and, and so you suddenly have this full palette, you're introducing wildlife, and so when I think about the big picture, the spirit of a corridor, we're, we're improving that, it's, it's a, you know, we're making it more outside of the sports and usable space. We're just stabilizing this thing, at the same time, we happen to just be flattening out a spot, but at the end product, you're going to have more wildlife, more stability, and it, and it, it's sort of, it's just, it adds to this corridor, so I, I mean, I know it's not a perfect sale. We, we sort of want to have that marriage, but we definitely think that this is decaying woods, and eventually it's just going to be an ivy slope with the trees that eventually fall down by themselves with no understory.
Questions?
Yeah, so just generally for the board too, so some of you guys may, may or may not know, but I live in a stream buffer, and when you buy a house in a stream buffer, the realtor, all they really tell you is, you may or may not have the variance, and it's not very helpful, right, so it's, it's challenging, I certainly empathize with the homeowner in this situation, just to provide context for the board. I don't nearly have this kind of a slope in my yard or anything, but to the point, there are trees that decay and fall, especially lately, it's, the past few seasons have been very wet, a lot of these trees do fall naturally, and it becomes somewhat of an eyesore, so when I saw this picture here, it, it really took me by surprise in a good way, I think it's very comprehensive. I think the challenge with the stream buffer is, is like to show the best intentions by the homeowner, which is, I think is being done here. You know, the, yeah, they had a plan before that was kind of a little less than this, but then, you know, plans change, when you kind of reassess things and see how things can work out, I do that with my interior products and stuff all the time. So I, I do believe, you know, the homeowner has good intentions here, I, I would be interested to know what concerns the city has, because I know the homeowners are only going 15 feet into this 75-foot buffer, and that's good to me, they're not really increasing too much impervious surface, they're trying to make, keep the trees that they have, and then kind of trying to supplement what they're taking out, so I just wanted to make note of all that, it's, it's very challenging, and, and I think, you know, all too often, people just don't do anything with their lots when they live in a stream buffer, and quite frankly, I don't think that's a good plan either. So I, I do want us to have kind of this discussion of some type of marriage or courtship, if you will, to, to understand how to make this work, and if it's not something that the city wants to approve, I think the homeowner reserves a right to know, deserves a right to know why, and specificity on how to get closer there more quickly, because from what I gather, I mean, we started, they started this probably in November, December last year, and, you know, another month or two goes by, and then your project keeps floating on, and it's not that the project has to be done overnight, it's just that, you know, a lot of money's being in consideration, I'm sure, this is probably, looks to be at least a $50,000 to $75,000 project. And, you know, hopefully at some point I'll do mine too, but it, it's a challenge, this is very, just, I, I think you guys have presented some good stuff here, I think this is, it's open to a good discussion for all of us to talk a little bit more about it and see what reservations the city has, because it's still not very clear to me, you know, what reservations the city has on recommendations.
Staff, can I add, yeah, Paul, thanks.
Yeah, I can, I can answer this. And I think you mentioned a lot of the, the correct things, so first the timeline, this actually went comparatively quick. It's like the, the first thing that they did with that, that first proposal was kind of what's considered a special administrative permit that has to be notified on the site, kind of as a site out, sign out there that's 30 days, kind of, and then a variance always takes two months, kind of, as at least two months kind of before it even comes to you, is when they need to submit it, then it gets notified in the newspaper. And that's, that's really not unusual, and that's, I mean, it's sort of a balance of notifying the neighbors and getting everyone aware of the project so that they can speak to you if they want to as well. And we've been leaning heavily on, on the variance criteria, and I have those here, one is variance criteria number two, no opportunity for any development under any design configuration unless a variance is granted. And that one we found us, because we had that, that proposal initially that showed sort of a smaller version of this. We felt this one, and then the, the third one asked about request does not go beyond the minimum necessary to afford to leave, and, and same thing, because we had this plan initially seen that had a smaller version. But without those plans, I mean, it's unfortunate that it's sort of, that we're basing it on something that, that they had submitted to us in, in good faith. But it had been posted, the neighbors have been notified with those initial plans, and, and that's what we based our recommendation of denial heavily on.
Have any neighbors or has anyone voiced opposition to this, whether it was the last one or this one?
No, we, we haven't heard anything for against in this case.
And then the difference between the two plans is roughly, I'm hearing, two parking spots or?
Yeah, it's roughly 10 feet sort of into that stream buffer, so it's, it's roughly, the difference is roughly 10 feet.
Sure, and, and I guess that's, yeah, because I've, I researched this case last time too, and it got deferred, and I mean, I did minimum necessary rule, I understand its intent and, and, you know, kind of how it's shaped, but, you know, it's kind of like, well, what did we talk about on our last, one of those last cases, impervious surfaces, it's, it's one thing if it's like 10 or 15, you know, 10 to 5 feet over or whatever, but egregiously over 10, 20, 30, 40, 50. So I, that's interesting to see, okay.
Yeah.
I have a question, I guess this would be for Mr. Streger, we've talked a lot about trees and the canopy and introducing birds and so forth, and initially you mentioned limiting the sedimentation flowing into the stream and improving that, can you speak a little bit more about how this plan may be the undergrowth or the, I forget the, the term you used, how will your plan improve the setting from a stream perspective?
Two-fold, the immediate area, the sodded area. The immediate area, the sided area, because of the grade in there, you know, will be at by two to four percent. That allows water to go down there and, and go, go down into the earth rather than ride that slope. So right away, the top of the slope is stabilized just because of the grass area. Everything down from there, because we're doing, you know, a good amount of plantings, right, but right behind the wall, we are planting heavily. And so that the idea of the fibrous root zones of those tree, those shrubs immediately will do that. Then once you start folding in some of the canopy trees, which will have larger root zones that really get out there. All the stabilization of the root zones will do it. So the shrubs kind of act one way, because they will have more fibrous roots. But once you start getting into the trees, especially we've got, I think it was like fourteen trees. All those roots get in there and they just start stabilizing it. Um, cause right now, cause it's healthy roots on these older trees, they're there. You're not getting new, really new root growth. So dirt is just little by little coming, coming off. So, um, it, it's really just basic. Anytime we do a slope, you, you know, you want to plant it, you know, you want it not just a slope. We just, we don't like to just hydroseed it. When we're restabilizing a brand new construction job, we hydroseed it and through the hydroseed, we plant trees. Cause we know in the long term, the trees are going to put roots out and they're going to drop leaf litter. And it's, it's a natural, natural cycle. So the idea that I kind of hit it from all different directions. We, we adjusted grade, that solves right away. We came in with all different types of plant material, you know, evergreen deciduous canopy, mid-story, under-story, evergreen. Uh, we got the whole buffet. So plantings and roots are how you stabilize slopes. Ivy on slopes is not, is not the, uh, is not the, the, the win all, you know what I mean?
Thank you.
What about the drainage? Is there any going to be, uh, cause that's one thing, right? Stabilizing the slope, but obviously you want the stream to maintain its flow, right? So you want to make sure that the water is getting down there in the correct manner.
With, without a doubt. So in this, the immediate area with the side, you're going to get it to permeate. It's still going to get into the water, you know, water tables and whatnot. So it isn't, you know, the, the water's not going to go away. It's just going to, it's going to permeate versus just hit the slope and erode. So we know, we know right away, we're going to be good there. Things we can do, part of these improvements and very often in landscape projects, we start looking at what are the culprits? Why do you get erosion? It's from, it's from concentrated water. So you look at a house, you start talking about downspouts and that, and this, that concentrated water. Any of these, and we didn't reflect it on here, but without a doubt, and we can make a part of this, is the idea of capturing water, the culprit on the back of the house, putting it into pipes and either doing flow wells or doing, um, you know, riprock. Basically you, you release the water into surge, surge rock, and it breaks the velocity. And instead of just barreling down the slope, it dissipates it, so it's at a slower rate. So certainly not reflected here, you know, again, it's part of, we've got, we've got to hit this from several angles. That's actually a good suggestion. We, we didn't quite address that, but it's with every new landscape project, pretty much drainage is automatic. So there will be captured water on the front end. And then what we're showing is a huge component of, of reducing shedding. Not, not that it won't, the water won't eventually get to the stream as it should, but it's going to slow down the velocity and the intensity of it. And that is what, that's the issues we're having with our streams. They pick up all this velocity because all this hard surface and coming off the roofs and steep slopes. And then, then you have muddy water in your streams. This is going to very much so reduce that. I mean, just looking at the footprint of what we're showing here, fifty percent of that backyard will be much less quick velocity shed than what the existing condition is right now.
Um, one question for staff. Um, so in your presentation, you mentioned that the landscape architect, is that who? It's for the city, looked at it or someone representing the city's interests?
Yeah, correct. Uh, it's a city arborist.
The city arborist.
The trained landscape architect.
Right, yes, we've met him before, I believe here.
It's a, it's also a new one, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, uh, but you'll meet her at some point.
Okay, good, good, good. I'm glad to hear it. So, um, I'm captivated by the plan that the homeowner has come up with to sort of take this stream buffer issue, which we've had for years and years, and we're going to have till the end of time in Dunwoody. Um, and find a way to sort of come up with a very creative way. Cause we've had a lot of the other stream buffers where we just talk about whether you can take a tree down or not. Um, so tell me a little bit more about how the city, I know why you had to recommend denial. I understand that part. Say this applicant had never put an applicant, application in. This is the first time you've seen the application. Can you just with, just take that aside, let's call it homeowner two, put this application in? Where would you have concern with what they've asked to do?
Let, let me, let me, um, let me try to answer this in a different way. And you can let me know if, if you're satisfied with it. Um, this is a legitimately good mitigation plan. So this is, I looked at this and I looked at, at some of these kind of before. It has, it's exactly what, uh, what, what the applicant had mentioned. It's sort of this mix of different planting styles is very good for both like the stabilization. It's very good for the filtration kind of the water. So it can actually infiltrate into the ground. This is a good mitigation, it's native plan, so it'll be good for wildlife. Um, there is really like a, a good chance that this will make sort of the, the situation better on the side. And we had a landscape architect review it too, and she says it's, it's a good plan. So this is, if we would see this with every project, that, that, that would be, um, you know, well appreciated. And that would certainly be a good thing.
Very much, that helped.
I have, um, one more question for staff, please. You mentioned in your initial presentation, if the board were to vote in favor of the variance that you asked if we would abide by or include three caveats. Thank you, I wanted to see that again.
Correct, and, and they are sort of, uh, two of our standard items. Uh, the first one here is that we asked that the site plan that you have seen, that that be followed so that it wouldn't exceed what's, what's before you now. The second one, uh, is similar kind of where we ask that they implement the mitigation plan that they both submitted, uh, as part of their permit application. And that they actually planned these, uh, the plant vegetation prior to receiving certificate of completion. And the third one is the one that you see that most cases to, um, that we asked that it be started within a year of receiving the variance application. Uh, the variance approval.
So I have one more last question for the city. Um, so I, I, I think the slope is pretty bad. Look at it. Um, um, it's, um, and, and I'm thinking that maybe they'll be able to make it better somehow. So in my mind, and tell me if the city kind of agrees, um, the flow of water going down as opposed to the water being in a flattest place and then a retaining wall holding it is probably better than the water just flowing down and going into the, the creek. I mean, the.
Yeah, overall, I mean, the elevation stays the same.
Thank you.
Right, if you start out in the same place up there and you end up in the same place down there. I think that the difference, uh, with this would be is if that mitigation plan is implemented, that there's more there to slow down the water, uh, if you will, that there's, um, just more stuff there right now. What's there is either, um, the vines sort of very much down there. It's like those trees that are mature trees that are, you know, forty, fifty feet tall, but there's no shrubs, kind of, there's no, um, under story trees. So it's both like, those tend to slow the water down and allow more for in, to infiltrate into the ground. And the same is true for rainfall, that there's just like more material there vertically that slows down the rainfall as well, which helps with infiltration into the ground.
Okay.
Yeah, presumably any kind of retention wall typically has drainage built into it as well, right? So that does not erode.
Yeah, that was my question kind of earlier, so.
You want to, yeah, can you speak to that a little bit more? Cause sometimes I see it, sometimes I don't. Typically in new retention walls we do.
One hundred percent. So, um, what we're speaking about is terracing and terracing on slopes slows down erosion. So we're, I'm going to add that to our palette, we're terracing. Um, and yes, part of modular retain, all retaining wells, specifically the modular, behind that wall, there is gravel. And there is a, um, basically a foundation drain. So, uh, it isn't like we're creating and we're going to like retain water. We're going to hold water and it's going to explode. There is a systematic way to deal with the water in this area. And then you have your wall. And then again, we will daylight that pipe. In theory, if water went down and collected at the base of the wall, we daylight that pipe. But then we do it, we would then have surge rock and break the velocity of that water. So again, it's, it's a, it's, it's a good system. Cause we, again, if we leave it the way it is, water is just rushing down. Flat area, deal with water, deal with it smartly. How you exit the water, you're, you're just slowing down all the troublesome stuff that's happening right now with, with the existing.
And that, and that's on your site plan?
Uh, we have the wall there in our full set that we're going to.
We'll have the piping, that's all I'm asking. The pipe, that drainage will be in the full set. So if we approve it tonight and we talk about a site plan dated December first, twenty twenty, what you just described will be in that.
One hundred, yes, that drainage is standard.
Perfect, thank you, thank you. Just want to clarify.
Sure.
Do you know how many trees you're going to take out and how many you're going to put back? If you don't, don't worry, you, you're fine.
We are put, I know that, so I, if I was to say, we have a couple of trees like in the yard that we're taking out. And I think there's one or two or three in the buffer. We know for a fact we are taking out, we are replacing way more trees, probably double the amount of trees we're taking out. Clear, that, that I know without even, and we can go to the plan, but I'm, I'm ninety-nine percent sure that that's correct. There, there's a lot of trees worth putting back.
The city's got some things.
I, I actually counted before the meeting because I had this feeling that, that, that you would ask. So they're moving a total of fourteen trees. Now, trees can be removed on residential property. These five of those on the stream buffer, that's before you tonight. Um, they're replanting seventeen trees, uh, in, in the stream buffer. So, um, so pipe removed in the stream buffer, protein removed overall seventeen replanted.
This mitigation plan was not the quote unquote landscape plan. You know, this started as a landscape project. There will most probably be, you know, like, we just showed generic shrubs by the house, but we were focusing on showing shrubs in that buffer. But I know, I know that there's going to be a more ornate plant up by the house, probably with a couple of additional trees, just to add that.
So to the city, the, the December first, twenty twenty, um, plan, is that the one with the less, uh, footage or more?
So that, that December, uh, let me actually double check. So the one here that's referenced, that's the, the one for the variance application. That's the one that's before you know, that has, uh, more.
Right, but you're asking that December first is the, is the way.
Yeah, I was just confused as to, because my assumption is that the homeowner wants to make better, you know, have that a little bit of extra space, the two extra parking lots that we're talking about. And it, I didn't know if the, yeah, if the staff, if, I didn't know if staff was saying it has to be this small over the two.
Now, if the site plan dated December first is the one they need to be in compliance with, I thought that they got their administrative permit on December the third or something.
Different application. So that was the previous application. The one we saw that was smaller, the city approved it.
And that's mostly the wall, right? The.
Yeah, because they weren't in the stream buffer, they didn't need a variance. Now, when they just, the staff had to, um, get an administrative permit. This new one is the big one.
Okay, understood.
Let's go. It's hard when it's not on the picture. Okay, I make.
The leading part is it says the site plan dated December first.
Which is the smaller.
The one we're voting on. And it's, it's, that's, that's a previous one.
So in other words, I would say like, you know, my vote would be to say, sure, I, I approve based on the, okay.
Uh, yeah, number two, right?
Yeah, I would say, hey, I'm fine with two and three, but not with one, because I want them to have the bigger space.
Staff, could you give?
Oh, you want to clear that up first, staff?
What the, if you think we're approving the right one?
Yeah, so I, I have the submitted plans here. So what was submitted as part of the variance application, that's part of your package. Um, that's the plan that shows the, the variance asset where they're going into the stream buffer. So like the, the, the big of the two. And that is dated, uh, December first, two thousand and twenty. So that's the one that you would, should you wish to go for approval, that's the one that you would go for. So it's pretty much if you's, if you condition it to the plan that's referenced here, then you would approve the variance.
Yeah, cause it, it shows a revision date. If you look, it's hard to see, because luckily someone printed it. The final was dated ten thirty, but the revised is December first. So that's, thank you.
Well, it's good to clarify before we read into the record, if we do so.
Yeah, that's what I thought too, so.
Then it says, then the February twenty-fourth plan, mitigation plan. All right. Clear, clear as mud?
No, Ron.
Okay, good. Any other questions, or have a motion?
Yeah, a motion to approve the variance?
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
I mean, what we have to say.
Um, yeah, Ron, you got to read a little bit more.
I'm rusty on that, I want to go.
I know, that's why we're.
Want to give it a shot, huh?
You do.
I say, I basically say E one. Um, okay, so motion to approve variance ZBA twenty-one dash oh seven. Michael Strager, agent for the homeowners fifty, at fifty-one forty-seven Pine Branch Point, Dunwoody, Georgia, seeks variance from chapter sixteen. Section sixteen dash seventy-eight to remove trees and construct a modular block retaining wall on the seventy-five foot stream buffer. Tax parcel number for the site is eighteen, three sixty-five, zero, one, two, one, nine.
Which we, we needed the three points.
Yes, the three points. Approval on three conditions based on the city. Number one, the construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan dated the first of December, twenty twenty. Two, during permitting, the applicant must submit a mitigation plan substantially similar to the buffer mitigation plan submitted on February the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. All trees, shrubs and ornamental plantings must be in place prior to receiving your certificate of completion. And three, if construction is not commenced within a year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, application approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you made them work for it. You guys are tough. Uh, any other, any other business? Any public comment? Board comment?
Uh, great, great plan. I just, like you guys said, I mean, I haven't seen anything to this degree of specificity. It's, it's, I mean, I think.
Years on the board.
I think things are supposed to be on a case by case basis, but people still think of precedent. And I think that's good to have kind of a baseline.
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely. Um, all right, excellent, good input, nice job, board. This meeting's concluded.